My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Uh, yes, Dan Robinson is here.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
You can step up to the podium if you wish.
Okay.
How can we help you this evening?
Well, I have a few questions. Good evening. I'm Dan Robinson here for NCI Properties regarding the storm runoff on our property we have the retention pond. And you have this tax that you want to apply to that. From what I understand from this, you are just, this is a tax that's only going to be applied, levied if it's not maintained correctly and the village has to come in and do something. Is that correct?
You're speaking about the backup SSA. Is that the term?
Yes, yes, he is.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, and that's fine. Thing is, I'm working with, you know, Stanley's got that area fenced off now. We originally, when we sold them that property for the parking lot, they put the retention pond in. We had an access ramp put in there and a gate so we could get a mower down there and mow it, maintain it. Since then, they've put in a security gate that we can't, our landscaper can't access through because it's a key card entry type thing. So they're maintaining it again, which is fine if they want to do that. But, you know, I, I was wondering, it doesn't say anything in here about giving written notice before anything, any action is going to be taken. Would it be possible to have something added that we can get like 60 days' notice or if you guys notice there's something, we need to be addressed so we can address it? That would have to be helpful. I don't want to just all of a sudden get a bill saying we had to take care of this and not be notified ahead of time.
Yes.
So we had, we had a similar situation up in Lakewood not too long ago, right, Mr. Hedges? Where we thought the village was going to have to intervene because Lakewood didn't, the HOA who was responsible for the ponds wasn't doing what they said they should or what we thought they should be doing. And so I don't know what the policy is for written notice, but we do actively engage. And that, what happened up in Lakewood is they got some ponds that they weren't maintaining to the standards in which they should have. We needed stormwater runoff.
There's no action. So we passed this.
So we actively engaged with the homeowners association at that time.
He's an applicant.
And said, hey, this is a problem. You guys don't do this, or what is your plan, or what are your plans? So that's how we got involved. It wasn't written notice, I don't think, but we did actively engage with them before something was done. It wasn't just one of these things where we just kind of come in in the middle of the night and do a bunch of maintenance because you guys want.
For this topic.
That's typically how it was. Now, I can't speak to written notice. Is that part of the process?
Um, it, I don't believe written notice is required, but you're an applicant. You've, you've signed the application for this, right? You signed for the application?
Well, this is a, I think we were on the application. Obviously, my old man didn't.
Yeah, but you're, you're, the two companies are signed for it and signed for the application. Tonight is just a public hearing for that, which will happen after a couple other things. After one other thing. But we can, we can talk about that between now and the next action. We can discuss the written, we can be in touch if you give me a contact information. If you're not the signature on the application, just give me your phone number and I'll give you a call.
Okay.
And we can talk about, there, there's a notice provision. I don't recall if it's written or not.
Okay.
But I, I can tell you that the only reason that the village would step in is because neither party to the agreement is properly maintaining the pond.
Right.
And we would not expect that to be a problem.
And this is not, this is not a major thing. I just wanted to know where we stand and what procedure we're going to use.
What I do recall, because I believe Stanley's lawyer asked for this, I believe there's a 30-day notice provision in your agreement that is not typically in the agreement. But I believe it was added at Stanley's request.
Yeah, they're, they're basically maintaining it. And if they stick, I mean, I ended up making a phone call earlier this year and have them cut the grass because he's fighting that toll. This is why I'm, you know, concerned about it. Because if they don't do it, I'm the one, it's my property, so I'm going to get hit with the tax. So I just, you know. Anyway.
It's a fair question. We'll, we'll definitely touch base.
Okay.
I think I gave away my last business card.
Here, right. Here, just put your phone.
Yeah, just jot it down and I'll give you a call.
All right, is there anyone else signed up to speak?
That's all for this evening.
I'll give you a call tomorrow. No, no.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Can you wait a moment, Mr. Robinson?
Was that all your questions?
Yes, it was.
We're just going to do a square and then get to talking.
No, we just want to make sure.
Yeah, that was it.
You want to be part of a public hearing?
We didn't figure you were talking.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. There is, there's going to be a public hearing on this topic, so I'd stick around a few minutes.
In about two minutes, if you could wait.
Oh, okay, no problem. All right, so before you, you have the meeting minutes for September 16, 2021. Please review them for additions, deletions, or corrections.
How's the sound, Tim?
If there are no additions, deletions, or corrections.
The sound is fine. I can hear everyone, yes.
Do we?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Sting.
Epstein.
Mr. Pope. Five. Or I, one of the same.
So now we have Mr. John Rufo, who is going to be sworn in this evening as our newest police officer. Mr. Rufo comes to us from Rosemont. He has 20 years as a public safety officer, which means he was cross-trained as police firemen. And currently resides in Rosemont, but he's making the right choice of just signing the contract to go to home here in period. So he's now going to be a member of our community in more ways than one.
Okay. Raise your ID and P D S. I do strongly swear.
I strongly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
Of the village of Hampshire, Illinois.
Of the village of Hampshire, Illinois.
According to best by the law.
According to best by the law.
Congratulations.
Now, maybe that you're already in the uniform, did they put you right out on the street now?
Since the earnest is not in here, you can't check to see if there's a written notice or not.
And this is normally where you have to stand up on your foot.
I don't see it.
Okay. Wasn't there a 30-day provision that it didn't have because they asked for it? Stanley's lawyer asked for some sort of 30 days or something that was under that?
No, I don't.
But, but we can check it.
Welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you so much.
Yep.
First speech here. That's what they're going to do right now. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is to move forward our appointment. As, as you know, we've been going through our appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. You have number seven?
Public hearing. All right, we've got to do a public hearing. Let's do that. So I will call to order a public hearing to establish SSA number 29 for stormwater management area to serve for the NCI and TRZ properties.
Does he get to close our meeting to open the public? Does he get to close our meeting to open the public yet?
No, it's part of, it's on the agenda, so.
Thanks. Now, I hope I can get it.
I'm sorry. I just, Mr. Robinson was, is here. He is with NCI. This is a detention facility that's shared between NCI and TRZ, which is a Stanley entity. So it's behind the Stanley parking lot that comes in off of industrial where it curves up north, up north. And then it's, it's on the far side, backside of the NCI property. So they have an agreement between themselves for maintenance, but the law requires that the village establish a backup SSA that would affect Mr. Robinson's NCI property and also the Stanley property that's involved. So that's what he was commenting on is, is a potential for, there's no action, first of all, there's no action taken tonight. So when we do present something for action, Mr. Robinson is asking that he would have a notice provision before special tax were to be imposed. I'm pretty sure that would be the practice of the village staff anyway, but we can look at adding that into the final ordinance that establishes this SSA. So does that, help answer your question, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, that's.
Good. So the record should reflect that Mr. Robinson was here and commented for purposes of this public hearing in that regard. And there was a public notice in the newspaper that, certificate of that has been filed with the village clerk. Notice was also mailed to NCI and TRZ directly in accordance with the SSA statute. And it does not appear that anyone else is here tonight to comment on this idea, this proposal.
Does anybody on the board or members of the public have any questions about the SSA number 29?
I do. In this process, what is the difference between what we're doing now and what we did on August 19th where we passed an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number 29 in the village of Hampshire?
It's a three-step process, Mr. Kelly. You do, you do an ordinance that proposes, well, you get an application, you do an ordinance that proposes the establishment and set a public hearing date. Here we are for the public hearing. Give notice to the owners. They may have come in with objections. You know, if they had, there's a process for resolving those. And then you wait a time because they have a, they have an opportunity to file a written objection after the public hearing.
Yeah.
And then finally, you do another ordinance that establishes the special service area.
Okay.
So it's a little, little drawn out, but it's a.
Why did we pass an ordinance if we're going to pass another ordinance?
Well, we followed the law.
Yeah, that's why I got confused. I'm like, I swear to God, before I talked, I voted for this.
Yeah, I do remember that.
So. So then my other, my other question is, based on what we shared this evening, since this backup act of aid is raised by both parties, does that area, is part of the stipulation that that area be accessible by both parties? What's the village's stance or?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you mean by acceptable.
Accessible.
Oh.
It can be, it can be reached.
Well, they have an agreement between themselves.
Right.
Which, you know, the village invited them to do that so that there was an easement back between the two of them for that access.
Right.
So I don't recall what, what the terms of that are. I just know it got done and it, it was recorded. And, and now if there's some gate, I, and I don't recall, the agreement assigned a primary, between the two of you, a primary responsibility. You're saying that agreement says that TRZ, Stanley, will do the maintenance?
Well, I, we, I don't know if it's a written agreement or not.
Well, there is one.
We were mowing that area with our landscaper. Then he put the gate up and our landscapers no longer had access to, because they had to drive to the mowers and they had to get it. So Stanley said he would take over maintaining it, which has been happening. I had to make a call or two minutes happens. So we're on top of it in that respect, so I, you know. We have that handled.
There is an agreement between the two companies. You might want to check with your dad on that.
Right.
Because there is an agreement, and if you don't like the agreement, let us know and we can, we can definitely bring Stanley and have a conversation.
Part that's concerning from my perspective is, don't take this around, whether you're going to be asking questions about being written notice and stuff based on something that's happening between your two companies already, and we haven't even proven. So what I'm getting at is, is that if you guys can't, if you guys can't get back there and mow it, and you're concerned that, that we're going to charge you overnight or something of that nature, it just, it just kind of is concerning to me. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? Like, you're, you're coming in and asking us if we could provide you written notice because there's already swaddled between the companies, is what it seems like?
No, it's not swaddled.
Okay. Just because it sounds to me like you can't.
It's our property.
No, I understand.
It's level and loving.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is you already said that you can't attack it anymore.
Right. And he said he'd mow it. And he has been taking mow it. There, there hasn't been an issue. I'm just saying before you guys attack me, I was.
There's nothing.
That's the only thing I'm saying.
That's the only thing stuck out to me. I'm just being, just being honest.
That's all I'm asking.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Do I need a motion to close the public hearing or?
You, you opened it by yourself. I think you can declare it closed.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing now.
Note, note that it's, what, 7:20?
7:20.
Thank you.
Yes.
You do not have to say.
All the other police officers are gone now.
Give me a call, okay? I got your number, I got your number. Okay, thanks a lot.
It's safe, you can leave now.
Okay, so now we're going to go back to presidential appointments. Brian Thompson has been the chief of police for several years. He worked for the village as we discussed at the first meeting in September for 40. And if conversations with him, he's never been appointed. So I think we need to change that. So I, I will entertain a motion to appoint Brian Thompson as chief of police for the remainder of the sitting president's current term or until May 2029.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Doing labor contracts most of my life. I have a question on J of the employment agreement. Says perform such other and additional duties outside of the police department as may be from time to time required by the village manager. What additional duties would that be and is compensated for those additional duties outside of this?
We can certainly discuss that. That's later on down there, but if you guys, if you guys seriously, if you guys want to discuss the contract and stuff, we can do it all together. It doesn't matter to me. So.
That's just a catch-all phrase, Toby. It would be administrative duties, things like budgeting and administrative duties like that, and would not be anything, it'd be compensated for extra.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Just like that clause in my contract, which is all the duties that's assigned.
Yeah, make coffee.
Which is. Chief, do you have any questions or comments about your contract?
No, I don't.
I, I felt that I wanted to put Mr. Thompson on a contract because I feel that his job is so different than everybody else's, and so he should be afforded certain, I don't know, luxury, is the right terminology or something of that nature. But he's not like a streets employee. He's not like an office staff employee. And so because his job, he doesn't fall into the standard work hours that the employee handbook covers. And so that's why I wanted him to be on a contract that specifies some of those responsibilities and things that are outside of the employee handbook. That's, that's it. You were looking at me funny and I.
Yeah, no, I was like, I'm.
And so I just, for so long, everybody was just kind of dumped into the employee handbook that we, the village has been working on for many years, and his position doesn't really fit. So I want to make sure, and we talked, Brian and I talked about, he's like, well, I trust the board, I've been here a long time and stuff, and it's great, but we've got to do things right.
I have absolutely no, like, right now, I'll make the motion to, to appoint chief as the official chief of police again.
Can I second it?
I think the contract's a different conversation, but I make the motion to appoint Brian Thompson as chief of police for the village of Hampshire.
Second it.
Questions or comments? Mr. President, follow.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Sting. Five. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Questions here. Five.
Okay, so now we can move on to the contract.
My question is, when we're discussing employment contract, should we move into executive session for the reason of speaking about, under section 2C1, for consideration of appointment, employment compensation, discipline, business, or specific employee?
You certainly can, I would imagine.
I don't know anybody else in the contract, you know, outside of executive session.
Mine was approved at this same meeting.
We, we did. We approved it, but I don't know that we.
We went into executive session.
No, actually, I'm, I'm sorry, the first time around, when I was first hired, it was, it was just like this.
We did it in whatever.
We did it in open session against what everybody told us to do, because we wanted to get it done and over with.
And that, it was because it wasn't on the agenda that night, but the, but the document was circulated.
I mean, if the board would feel uncomfortable, we could certainly go into executive. Doesn't make a difference to me.
It's not a requirement, it's an allowance.
Gotcha. I just didn't know what the rules.
So what do you guys?
It was a question, it wasn't a request.
Okay.
Because we could table a contract conversation until executive, if that's what you guys would like to do.
Why don't you tell me the B, I'll go.
You're good. I was, unless, from my opinion was unless the chief would like us to go into executive session.
I have no reservations to discuss it right now. I mean, I did.
And like I said, it was, it was a question, it wasn't our.
I appreciate.
We'll leave it public.
And just for the record, I mean, the compensation and the benefits and everything are pretty in the budget, were already approved by the village board, so there's really nothing in here other than, you know, the, the specific provisions of the contract. And this contract was written, was drafted by Mr. Passarelli, who's our, our, both contract discussion, he's also of counsel for HR purposes with Ansel Glink. And he, he and I drafted the contract based pretty much on the framework of my contract and other police officer contract, police chief contracts in the area.
Just want to curious, does it primarily reflect where the chief has been at?
It's exactly where he is now. There's no additional benefits, there's no additional paid leave or anything like that.
Kind of codifies it.
Right. The only question I have is, we had talked about this, you were here at long lengths, all the non-union commissioned officers are going to follow what the union.
Contract.
Contract is. Okay.
This is basically, like trustee postering, it's just codifying what we've already been doing, but it's just written down, treating people the right way, following, kind of following what other municipalities are doing and that kind of thing. I've had the opportunity to speak at length with both Mr. Hedges and Mr. Thompson about the police department, some of the challenges that the village faces now and the one that we face in the past and stuff. And so one of the things that we've all talked about, the board is being concerned about, you know, morale, staffing and that kind of stuff. And so I've learned through this process that Mr. Hedges and Mr. Thompson are really involved in the operations of the village and the police department, and it's a really good, it's a cohesive relationship. And so I don't have any reservations with the board, so that's why I presented a few basically with this stuff. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the employment contract with the police chief, Brian Thompson.
Follow.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Welcome to the village of Hampshire.
Training starts tomorrow.
The other thing I just talked about.
We're going to send him back to the academy, I think.
Right after, right after, we're going to cover.
Yeah, there you go.
He's going to be riding with the new guy.
Do you have any words with us for us?
Thank you.
Is this your training officer?
One of them.
Hi, Mr. Hedges, you're on.
Thank you. We would ask for consideration of a motion to approve a raffle sponsored by the Hampshire School Organization, a maximum of $500. And I believe the documentation is in here, pretty straightforward.
No, just, they didn't, they didn't include their addresses on the page two. It's not a big deal, we can just see it later on in the, in the form. So page two, they just put clover circle in Hampshire. I just kind of assumed that, and when I got to the end of it, I got.
Yeah, it doesn't say Hampshire or Illinois.
Oh.
So, I mean, it could be from, it could be rural, I mean, it's a school.
I could tell you they all live in here.
No, and then, and when you got later into it, I mean, you saw that it was, but that was my first question, so.
But the, but the notary said?
I'm assuming, taking them on their word that they were both present when they signed. Yeah.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the raffle application? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the raffle application from the Hampshire HSO. Questions or comments? If you have questions, please follow the law.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Questions here.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next item, we would ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending, excuse me, to approve an ordinance allowing a special use for towing services at 220 Kais Avenue. We've talked about this address before. This address has changed hands twice now in the last year. The new, the new owner has really fixed it up nicely and done a good job. This is just bringing it into compliance with a zoning variance that was required before he purchased the building.
I just have a question as to why it was allowed, since it needed to have a variance in that, how come it was allowed just because he was using?
I'm sorry.
What's the variance?
Well, it's.
Special use, not variance, special use.
Special use.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Use the wrong word. The special use, because it said later in there that he's been operating that way for, and it sounded like it was less than a year, but because it was purchasing the building of the property.
Well, he shouldn't have been operating there technically, but I think when it was discovered and, and then he was going to acquire the building, the village, then urge to file a petition for special use to get this thing all lined up.
Trustee postering, we were having some real problems with the prior owner, and they were in the process of trying to sell it without losing the tenants, which were all part of the purchase. So the, the new owner of the building, the former owner of the building, and the village just kind of worked on an arrangement. He was supposed, the original owner was supposed to file for this special use and he never did. And so it was a difficult situation, but we managed to get through it. And this will make everything correct now.
Okay. Now, I appreciate that I just, I'm fact that we have been doing it before.
Yeah, it should not have been operating that way. This was a gentleman who moved out from Chicago and thought he was still at an alderman, if you know what I mean.
So, you guys have any other questions about the?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, can I remember what happened to be here, what's the discussion at the planning and building commission meeting was? Thank you for the detailed notes, but was the overall feeling of having a, it sounds like they aren't even operating here, but a towing facility running?
Yeah, it is. My understanding, speaking a little further on the actual ordinance, is that verbatim
Right after, right after, we're gonna cover.
Yeah, there you go.
No, 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 he heard me.
It is, it really is.
He's gonna be riding with the new guy.
Do you have any words with us, of course?
Thank you.
Is this your training officer?
One of them.
All right, Mr. Hedges, you're on.
Thank you. We would ask for consideration of a motion to approve a raffle sponsored by the Hampshire School Organization, a maximum of $500. And I believe the documentation is in here, um, pretty straightforward.
No, just that they didn't, they didn't include their addresses on the page two. It's not a big deal, we can just see it later on in the, in the form. So, page two, they just put clover circle in Hampshire. I just kind of assumed that when I got to the end of it, I got.
Yeah, it doesn't say Hampshire.
Oh.
So, I mean, it could be from, who did grow old, I mean, it's a school.
I could tell you they all live in here.
Now, and then, and when you got later into it, I mean, you saw that it was, but that was my first question, so.
But the, uh, but the notary said?
I'm assuming, taking them on their word that they were both present when they signed. Okay, yeah.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the raffle application? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the raffle, uh, application from the Hampshire HSO. So. Questions or comments? If you have questions, please call the board.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, the next item, we would ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending, excuse me, to approve an ordinance allowing a special use for towing services at 220 Kies Avenue. Uh, we've talked about this address before. This address has changed hands twice now in the last year. Uh, the new, the new owner has really fixed it up nicely and done a good job. Um, this is just bringing it into compliance with a zoning variance that was required before he purchased the building.
I just have a question as to why it was allowed, since it needed to have a variance in that. How come it was allowed just because he was using?
Um, I'm sorry.
What's the variance?
Well, it's.
Special use, not variance, special use.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Use the wrong word. The special use, because it said later in there that he's been operating that way for, and it sounded like it was less than a year, but because it was purchasing the building of the property.
Well, he shouldn't have been operating there technically, but I think when it was discovered, and, and then he was going to acquire the building, the village, then, uh, urge. File a petition for special use to get this thing all lined up.
Trustee Postering, we were having some, uh, real problems with the prior owner. And, uh, they were in the process of trying to sell it without losing the tenants, which were all part of the purchase. So, the, the new owner of the building, the former owner of the building, and the, the village just kind of worked out an arrangement. He, he was supposed, the original owner was supposed to file for this, uh, special use, and he never did. And, uh, so, it was a difficult situation, but we, we managed to get through it. And this will make everything correct now.
Appreciate the digesting, I'm sure, fact that we had been doing it before.
Yeah, it should not have been operating that way. This was a gentleman who moved out from Chicago and thought he was still at an alderman, if you know what I mean.
So, um, there, you guys have any other questions about the?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, gentlemen, where off it happened to be, or what's the discussion at the planning and zoning commission meeting was? Uh, thank you for the detailed notes, but was the overall feeling of having a, it sounds like they aren't even operating there, but a towing facility right now?
Yeah, it is, my understanding, uh, speaking a little further on the actual ordinance is that, verbatim, towing services isn't specifically allowed, so, uh, as Mr. Hedges said, it's just kind of brought everything congruent with the operation. Uh, great, gentlemen, uh, they will be operating 11 to 4. Uh, based on basic recovery, relocations, the towing services, when these are fashioned, uh, occasional delivery of vehicles, uh, 7, 8, 9 P.M. But other than that, they've had no complaints from the residents, neighbors, or, so, at this point, it's almost just a test in the back end, they're not going to file that in here.
I have a question. Is this property located in the areas that was recently discussed for the water issues?
Uh-huh.
And have we ensured that none of their vehicles or anything are going to be added to that?
Uh, we don't have anything to say about that.
Oh, the piece of property, they're not altering the property in the current state?
I understand that, but when they're going to be, we're talking about ending the building shop and anything that, that, oh, we, we can, I mean, is there anything in here that's in the M2 general industrial district zone that requires them to dispose of things appropriately? So that we're not adding to the water issues that we're in?
Um, I could speak generally and say yes. I mean, there are ocean rules and, and safety rules that are not local ordinances or anything. Uh, but that could be true in any of the operations in the, in that type of zoning.
So, your concern is the type of operation there would be, can't have the ability to contend with the groundwater, that's our issue. That, that's the issue.
Those were the specific chemicals, not those chemicals, but it was machine cleaning or whatever the environmental scientist said to us, was the type of chemicals found in the groundwater from the previous rental owners of the state facility.
Right. Well, theoretically, they're supposed to be following all the rules and regulations as it is, it shouldn't be doing. And so, we can't further regulate. I mean, if the zoning code allows it, like as an example, if it was painting, they should be handling it appropriately, and if they're not, they're going to be fined by the I, I E.P.A., and they're going to have to repeat. And that's all outside of us, I think.
A good question on 12C, which is page three of the contract. Approximately 40 vehicles, uh, the language goes on to say there should be no storage of vehicles outside the fenced area. Would it be appropriate to change that to, there will be no storage of vehicles outside the fenced area?
Uh, no, it's not allowed, so, uh, I think the answer is probably yes. Is that in the ordinance, uh, Mr. Coe?
I don't know.
I think you're reading the, uh.
I'm, I'm reading.
You're reading the plant, planning and zoning commission.
Yeah.
Documents.
Yes.
The, um, right, the ordinance, uh, the proposed ordinance before you just says that all the improvements on the property will be constructed in accordance, I, I guess we could say constructed and operated in accordance with all applicable codes and regulations, if you would prefer. Uh, but certainly, uh, it is a zoning rule that storage is to be, uh, inside a fenced area, so it would not be allowed, uh, anywhere else.
Okay.
And then, that's, that was the nature of the comment, I think, Mr. Brock, at the meeting, is, uh, there was a reminder to the applicant that there should be no storage outside that fenced area.
And I, I did review the property, actually, quite a few of us, uh, committed to review the property. Uh, there's really not much opportunity to store vehicles outside of the fence that it is.
I have a question just about the, um, the storage and, uh, that it's, it's only going to be open from 11 to 4. And I know it's been operating already, has that, I mean, the day, did it pretty much come, like, stay between that 11 to 4? Because I would think if someone needs to pick up their vehicle, then they would have to work to get it dropped out somewhere. And that's why I was just surprised at the hours, um, and I think I have nine years of Lincoln towing from Chicago, and at 3:00 in the morning having to go pick up cars and stuff. So, I don't see that as something out here, but I was just curious.
The towing company is not called the Hampshire Pirates.
No, and I, I'm not sure I understand the question. There's no requirement that they operate from that, that's, they just informed that at the planning and zoning commission, they indicated that.
They're staffed at their office. They still do occasionally, you'll have a couple hours traffic coming and going, uh, both like moving off, relocated vehicles, or, but it's part of the technical hours, it's 11. Having been a previous resister, if someone would like to take a look, you're the one that they put on their desk.
It's interesting, he's got some good stories, huh?
And this is an extension of his other business, it's that, um, from Addison, so it's kind of like, this'll be where it's dropped off for like the far west.
They, they wanted, uh, an intermediary position between Rockford and Addison.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Now, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 21-37, a motion to approve an ordinance allowing special use for towing services at 220 Kies Avenue.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Coe, did you want that, uh, modification to the one clause?
No, no matter.
All right.
We can do it now if you want, speak now or forever hold it.
Yeah, and it kind of goes without saying. You certainly have to operate under the zoning regulations as they apply, so.
Yeah, it's very.
All right.
All right, Mr. Black, can you call the board?
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you. We would now ask your consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending the municipal code, chapter 2, police regulations to modify provisions governing the operation of certain motor scooters in the village. Uh, this came up at a recent board meeting, and, uh, really, all this does is, um, redefine toy scooters so that they're considered just toys, like toy cars, and we talked about that at the last meeting, so toy scooters would be treated like any other toy, rather than an adult scooter.
And we have a 15 mile an hour max?
That it's capable of doing that.
Anybody want to sit in front of me, uh, 15 miles an hour when I get a one scooter?
Actually, that was my plan for the weekend.
That appears to be.
I'll drive it over your house, and you get the sidewalk.
No, I think a 15's a little excessive, I would think.
You're, you're getting airlifted with 15.
So, that was going to be 91, so what do you think it should be?
I don't know how fast they go, but 15 is bizarre.
15's a little quick.
It's a 13 road use.
Yeah, that's fair. I'll show you Andrew Washington.
And I thought when we discussed this, we said, I said I had no problem with this, provided that if there's a kid out there riding around on a scooter, a barbie car, or a Jeep or something, that there has to be a parent out there. So that some older, older elderly, uh, walking down the street doesn't have to jump out of the way.
The only, the only thing I will say is that as these kids get a little bit older, as in the 10, 11, 12-year-old range, parents aren't going to be walking with their kids going to the park.
Yeah, that's, that's what they include, things like hoverboards.
So, I, I don't disagree with you, and I don't know how you could write that in like if they're at their house, but there's no way in the world that, I, I mean, what, cop, uh, police officer's going to see a kid riding one of these electric scooters or hoverboards or something like that to the park on the sidewalk like they do, and then look to see if there's a parent walking with them, and then.
The right of way does go to the S man, I believe. With, with the right of way then go to the pedestrian?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, if they hit somebody, then truly the child is in the head, and then, um, it can be charged in violation of. Not, yeah.
Trustee Coe, to your question earlier, I just did a quick search, because, uh, the world's fastest hoverboard, which I think will be the fastest, I think, there's beyond just 10 miles an hour. Of their average, it's maybe half an hour, so if you say a max speed of 10 miles an hour, I think that would be the world's fastest hoverboard on the planet.
Yeah, because there'll be a dad that'll goose up to the scooter.
Yeah, scooters are different.
Yeah, the average is 10.
But it has to burn.
And I, we, we keep saying toy, but it doesn't say toy in the ordinance. A motor-driven scooter is capable of traveling at speed, not greater than. Should it be toy, motor-driven toy scooters?
It says toy like scooter, definitely, 15 mile an hour, that was taken.
No, not in the. I don't know how you define that. I think that's probably not like, what's an applicable vehicle, you could go off of whether or not a second or a plate.
The radar work at 15?
I very love to pick up that number.
I would second that. I was just going to say.
10, uh, trustee Coe, you brought it up, 10, 10 good or not, or 10 more?
Oh, it don't matter to me, I'm just saying, 15's, you're, 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 you're en route to a hospital.
Hey, I think 10's fair. Can you take radar at 10?
Yeah, Barbie car.
You mean Barbie radar?
I shouldn't say that, I'd probably get one.
He wants. Is that what he wants for Christmas?
I see that, no.
Hmm, it's coming. You just said it.
Did we have that in the budget?
It is now.
Thank you.
You said you needed a new year. A car and a radar.
Okay. But, um, we felt, so the average risk of your injury for a pedestrian struck by a vehicle is 10, which means it is 10 miles per hour. So, if we can reduce that down to 10, I think that, that'd be a good idea, and the price of the pedestrian, that much more. Hoping that a further discussion with, uh, those who have a.
So, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, to approve an ordinance amending the municipal code, chapter 2, police regulations, uh, ordinance 21-38, with the change of 10 miles an hour.
So.
Second.
And I, I know this is obvious to you two, but what, what we're saying is they're not capable of doing 10 miles per hour, not that they will be measured.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. In the actual ordinance, whereas the court would consider authority being necessary and advisable upon, like that regulation, to allow the operation of motor-driven scooters, and I'll put in here an amendment. Uh, capable of speed not to, not greater than 10 miles per hour on streets, sidewalks, alleyways, parking lots, and other public places. A Vespa is a scooter and it's street legal, and it could go well above 10 half an hour. Their reason why we list streets in here, I thought this was to amend it for the sidewalks.
Oh, so that gets into the, oh, on motor vehicle court, code versus us?
Well, I mean, we're saying a scooter, a motor-driven scooter can go on after 10 miles per hour on a street. If it's a licensed vehicle, does it, is it not able to go wherever this legal is limited?
I'm trying to look that up for you now. Uh, it's, uh, these are definitional terms from the Illinois Vehicle Code.
Motor-driven cycle or scooter.
My only question is that street. Should it just say sidewalks, parking lots?
I want to take streets out of it.
But it takes in everything else in there, so, motorbikes, motor-driven.
I think that would be fine if you took streets out. Their intent was never to allow them in the street.
We don't want to.
We have people.
Isn't that defined as a?
Well, we don't say that. We say motor-driven cycle or scooter. So, motor-driven cycle means I can't do my motorcycle on the street according to A, section 1A. No person shall operate a motor-driven cycle or scooter as defined in sections C, F, 2, 1, 2, 1, so that would be where.
All right, so, uh, this term is any motorcycle or any motor scooter with less than 150 cubic centimeter piston displacement?
Okay.
Well, it's definitely a sub 50.
So, I'm assuming a Vespa, which has to have a vehicle registration plate.
But not a license.
So, it's anything under 150?
Correct.
Okay. So long as we have that definition in here, because I'm thinking there are residents that ride.
So, you're, you're street.
Right.
Thank you for finding that. I just wanted, that's why I saw that, I don't want to.
Yeah, I just had to refresh my memory. We looked at these definitions when, when this was under discussion, Mr. Ray and, and Mr. Hedges.
So, on the floor, the system where the Britain allows residents to use licensed vehicles, for which they may not make that on license. I think that would be one.
If there's a, if it's a licensed motorcycle or Vespa or that type of thing.
This does not apply.
This would not apply.
Correct.
And a child shouldn't be driving anywhere.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, we have first and a second. Mr. Black, can you please call the board?
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Thank you. Uh, we now ask for your consideration of a motion authorizing the sale or disposal of surplus property owned by the village of Hampshire. I'll let, uh, Lori tell you a little bit about these vehicles.
Um, so, uh, just as described in the agenda supplement, there are four vehicles that we're interested in getting rid of at the present time. Um, the, you'll recall that we had a 1999 street, uh, snowplow that was gracefully retired, um, and it went to the sewer department, so we're getting rid of the 1991, um, sized, uh, snowplow-sized truck. Um, there's a 2007 F-250, a Ford pickup truck, that was originally authorized to be, um, donated. Um, there was too much bodywork required on that vehicle to make it practical, um, to accept the donation, so we'd like to dispose of that. Um, we recently, excuse me, discovered that the 2010 Dodge Ram 2500 pickup had, um, irreparable, uh, rust damage to the frame and was unsafe to drive, so we've retired that vehicle. And then, also, the 2012, uh, former police squad car that was originally designed for our building department official. Um, that's, uh, vehicle has kind of just, uh, been sitting around, and so, it's time to get that, um, uh, on the road as well, to somebody else, or someplace else.
Is that what you thought from being sold then, or just, just?
So, at the time, um, I, I really don't know. Our staff will take a look at what's the best method to get rid of these vehicles, um, at the best benefit of the village. So, possibly sale, um, we'll look into auto auctions. I, I just really can't tell you exactly what we're going to do with it at this time.
A car's older than some of these.
Probably hasn't had the abuse many of these have had though.
No, that's what, I mean, I was curious if, you know, if it can be sold and somebody can bash.
Yes, well, that, that's the goal, certainly, yes.
My car. No, that's okay. It should be that.
Anyone have any questions?
For the 2007 F-250, can you give a little more detail on what more bodywork than practical means?
So, um, uh, Sean, who's our employee that was going to accept it, uh, spearhead the, the rehab of the vehicle, found individuals to assist with, um, the motor repair and those types of things, detailing the vehicle inside and those types of things, but wasn't really able to find somebody to deal with the rust. So, the bed of the truck is rusted through completely, um, and it, uh, it just wasn't practical for him to find somebody to, to fix it.
Uh, trustee Kelly, I think at the end of the day, um, he got busy. We, we, I pushed him a little bit. I tried to make arrangements with the body shop, but I think just with COVID and everything, he just didn't have the time to get this done. We, we dragged it out for over a year, as you know, and, uh, at that point, I just suggested to Sean that we pull the plug, and he was good with that.
Okay, I entertain a motion authorizing the sale or disposal of surplus property owned by the village. So.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Black, can you please call the board?
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, you have before you the Streets Department, um, monthly report. Uh, trustee Coe, would you like to summarize that?
No, I think it all pretty well, it's written down for you.
Um, I would like, uh, utilities is not included here, but Streets did help with this. I do, I do just want to mention briefly, uh, I want to thank particularly, um, Mike Stark, who helped us resolve a real messy situation up in, uh, at the cul-de-sac up in Lakewood Crossing. Um, he had given us a time of materials estimate of $88,000 for that project. I, I did it under emergency services. I did touch base with trustee Coe and the mayor. Um, but it came in at $60,000, which was our original, um, expectation before we ran into problems. And the project went really smoothly, three days, like clockwork. The residents are very pleased. The restoration was done very well. So, I really appreciate Stark there, like a part of the family here.
Under the storm drain repairs, they're all over the board. Some of the pipes that go into the catch basins, which is in the curb, uh, some of the pipes underneath were never mortared. Somebody just pounded bricks in, they finally, uh, eroded away, which caused the ground to cave in, which caused sinkholes.
Were a lot of that?
They're, they're all over the place. Uh, bricks, when, when you put a manhole in, you have to mortar, brick and mortar the inside and the outside. And they're finding a lot of these aren't, brick are not mortared on the outside. And they're finding a lot of these are brick, are not mortared on the outside, they're dry brick. So at some point in time, there's no mortar, like, you know, you put up a brick wall with no mortar, it's gonna fall off. And that's what's starting to happen now. And this is, they're starting to get a lot of these, are these really old areas?
No, this was, this is Lakewood Crossing, so it's only about 15 years old. And now, just for the record though, this was a service line that broke. And the service line, the same service line broke, I think, two years ago. So we have five cul-de-sacs up there that have the exact same design of water lines. So they, instead of just running a straight line, which we did to correct this one, across the cul-de-sac, it was a very small cul-de-sac, three houses. So they ran, they attempted to make junctions in this water main to provide services to these three junction boxes. And one of them failed a second time and based on the, on the testing that we did, couldn't tell if it was the same fitting or not, or if it was just a larger area. But instead of just starting, this is also a very precarious place because this house sort of sits on a, on a hill and then the driveway slopes down. The last time, I'm told, I wasn't here, but the last time we had to dig it up, his house looked like it was gonna fall in the, in the hole.
Yeah, the pictures were pretty bad.
And we're also concerned that maybe the design or the engineering of these water lines, since we have three, four more cul-de-sacs just like it, could be similar in other areas. We did not find that when we got in, when we broke, tore it up. What trustee Kelly, or Coth is talking about is a separate problem that they see when they're down there, but that's not the reason we were digging.
That's part I understand. I guess my question is, Warren, to not do it the way you're talking about trustee Coth, is that the code?
No.
And then the inspector looked at it and said this passes?
Yep.
They would have had to if they let the construction go, but does, is that passing code to do it?
No.
Because?
No, that's cheating.
So somebody would have?
And there's one on Jake right now, right on Jake and I want to say Monticello in Tuscan. They're starting to develop in Tuscany as well. The pipes either are eroding underneath where they go into the actual structure, they're not mortared. That's what's happened.
You're talking about storm sewers now?
I'm talking about all of the storm sewer problems that were starting to develop on Tuscany now are from improper installation of brick and mortar in the manholes where the pipe goes in the manhole. After a while, the brick has nothing to hold it together with the mortar, so it falls out, it erodes, it rots quick and you get sinkholes. So when you drive around, you start to see all these, that's what's happening.
But that's, my question is, not mortaring it or doing it however it is sold, is that the code?
No. And that should have never passed inspection.
Who would have inspected it?
It depends on which development and when it was inspected.
For example?
I don't.
For example?
All I can tell you is I don't generally, when those were built, but I don't know who the inspectors were. We can look into it.
Was it, would it be our engineering firm that was not?
Yeah, I mean, EEI has been our engineering firm all that time, but this is the first I've heard that we have that situation, so we should, we'll have to get out there and take a look at it. I'm not aware of it.
So if there were an inspection and it was not approved and the inspector said it passed, what resource do we have if we're spending village money to fix all of these things?
Well, let me, first of all, there are a lot of things contractually we could do if EEI is making mistakes or not making inspections they should be inspecting. I have no reason to believe that, and that has nothing to do with what we're talking about right now. We're talking about replacing water service lines, not storm sewers or manholes.
Oh, I was wondering, I thought your original comment was storm sewers and that's what I asked.
I know, and that's what I'm saying, that's what you're speaking to, but that's not what this was. This was a, these were water service lines.
The incident you're speaking about, this, the water line repair of Lakewood, you know?
Yes.
Originally, we started talking about the storm drain.
We were talking about storm drain.
That's what I was, I didn't.
Under which?
Storm, yeah. It's on the.
I think for the problem to go away.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were.
I think for the problem to go away, because I think that somebody from public work should be with the inspector on the final inspection, because I'm done them and they stick a mirror underneath the pipe, or they'll crawl in the pipe, or they'll stick a mirror down in the pipe and they'll turn it around to make sure everything underneath the pipe or you can't see it all mortared.
Well, I would just tell you that if we're paying an engineer firm to do that, we shouldn't have to pay an employee to babysit them. So if we're finding problems like that, I'll speak to Dave tomorrow and we'll talk about those man, those specific ones that you're mentioning.
That's why I'm asking, because some of these addresses, I think, are in, they're sort of newer than within the last 20 years.
And so if it is in fact an issue, it's a trustee Coth's comment, do we have a recourse about something like that that's already been done?
What do you mean? Well, yes, we have a contract with EEI and I will, I can look at the contract and see what the contract, what the provisions are and the penalties are for them either ignoring an inspection or not doing an inspection and saying that they did.
No, I'm saying even for work that's been completed in advance?
I don't know for sure. We'll have to look into that.
That's what she was asking.
Yeah.
Because I know, I know we have pretty, not ironed by it, but we have pretty good contracts in place now.
We do have a good contract in place, but we've also never had these kinds of issues with EEI, to my knowledge, so I'll have to check with them and find out. Trustee Coth and Dave and I can go out and take a look at these and see what it looks like. That's not my experience, just for the record.
Just one other unrelated question, because it mentions the salt. Do we have all our salt in the already? Can we put it here?
So our fiscal year doesn't match up with the state, and so we have, enter into a salt contract each and every single year, and we have to accept at least 80% of the contracted tonnage, up to 120% we can get at the same contracted price. So right now, these last purchases were from the prior year contract, so, but no, we will continually get salt throughout the whole winter.
I think what you're referring to is this is the last of the contract, but that's last year's contract.
Yeah, it said salt deliveries to close out our contract.
Yeah, it's from last year.
It's from last year. I just thought it was gonna start to be snowing.
That's a, that's a no.
We have it all, we need it and stuff, so, okay. Thank you.
I do want to just commend the Streets Department, too. I like the state of its enthusiasm and its best case enthusiasm and every design and thank you to the village for promoting what they did, the media, because that was a really kind of cool, the Streets Department.
We learned today, on that same token, that a resident in town thought that they could add to it. And so if you, if you drive past the one of these at Tuscany Woods, it's phenomenal. They added a whole bunch of more festive things that they wish to remain in that. But it's, the monument sign.
Oh. It's welcome to, you're one of the, welcome to Ronkey or Edith.
It's actually east of Ronkey, just before that white dormouse.
Yeah.
By the water tower.
I saw it as I came back into town this afternoon and I thought, wow, you really stepped it up.
They don't. They put some corn stalks and stuff.
Oh, I saw the picture Linda, but I didn't know who did it.
So David did a really great job and she just had some extra stuff in one hand.
Very nice.
They'll also be out Sunday night with our, as well as our police department with trunk or treat, sorry, Sunday night, yeah, Sunday afternoon.
Okay, next is your building permit report?
Yes, you have that in your, in your packet as well. We're, actually have exactly the same number of permits issued this year than we did last year, just a very different graph, as you can see. But we continue to have no problems at all with issuing permits. SafeBuild continues to do a good job. Josh is continuing to take more and more of a role with SafeBuild, so that's about it.
Have you had a conversation with any of the developers to understand the new home permits? Because I know there's, there's few conversations I'm seeing in the news. There's one about low inventory of homes and still high demand, but then there's the other conversation of it's really hard to get material in supply chain. So we know is this, is the low permits because of the supply chain? Are they designing materials to build the home?
I've been speaking to, I think it's more a matter of timing. I really think we're gonna see an increase in permits. This is still just Prairie Ridge building, really, we don't have anybody else new.
I'm just looking at the year over here differently.
Yeah, I think it's just timing, but there are material challenges. The two builders that are building now, Silverthorne and NBR Ryan, are continuing to sell homes and then, and then build them. I think I mentioned in this room recently that Lennar plans to do it slightly different. They plan to pour basements, sell the house, and then buy the material, so that they know what, sorry, the other way around, buy the material in a kit form and then sell the house at that cost. So it's not really a spec home, but I would say that they're, they're protect, they're hedging their bets or protecting themselves. They're not gonna build a house, they're not gonna sell the house until they know exactly what it's gonna cost them to build it, including appliances and all that.
We've seen what that cost of materials.
Yeah. And what we're being told is that people are now paying $20,000 more for the same house under the same conditions, partially because the market's there, also because material costs are up that much. And they're delivering homes without appliances or with used appliances. That, I can't say that's happening here in Hampshire, but I'm reading about that quite a bit.
That's all I was asking, I know materials. That's really just.
Yeah, I think that's increasing the cost. I've not been told by any of the builders that they're, they're not able to finish houses because they can't get materials.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have accounts payable.
So we would ask for a motion to approve October 7, 2021, accounts payable to personnel.
Any questions or comments about the $175 disbursement? Now entertain a motion to approve the $175.16 disbursement for accounts payable to personnel. Can you please call the board, Mr. Clark?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Stigman.
Hi. Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Next, we have the regular, if you will, accounts payable in the total of $197,000 to change. Please review the package and let's have any questions? Who printed this pack? That's my question. The vet should be landing. Some of us are bored.
I have a question on the floor of the December report. The storm sewer pipe elementary floor?
So that, that was a pipe that was needed to repair a storm sewer situation over by Hampshire Elementary? So it's a kind of a routine expense for repair.
So has that repair been done?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I'm just curious because it's not listed on the laundry materials for the Streets Department here, does that either be too relevant?
Yeah, the date is back from August, so maybe it was done previously.
Well, we can send a report now.
So, well, I mean, yeah, the invoice is dated August 31st. Corin Maine is a supplier of a lot of our water and sewer metal materials and they usually are very good about, you know, issuing their invoices properly, so I would assume that it's done.
If you'd like to know, I can check with Dave and let you know tomorrow.
Well, I'm just curious if that was a similar issue that we were having after we were there is, or if it was?
It's just, we purchased a piece of pipe, so I can't really tell you what it was unless I check with Dave.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was a very old pipe or if it was.
That would be obviously an older area.
Probably a very old area.
But I don't know. I think a lot of these.
Jason Merritt, it's the violation mows at the Bobak House, and I wanted, I couldn't remember the house that we were in litigation with, and if that's the same one and we're still mowing, are we going to agree?
That, that is accurate. We settled for less than, did not include any of this, it was only on the tree piece. So yes.
So we're still mowing the house?
Yeah.
Why, we can send them a notice to pay for these charges, is that correct?
I don't believe we can.
The agreement was for the tree removal, not for maintenance of code violation.
We won't, we won't be paid by the bank for this. At least that's my expectation, Mr. Schuster.
Is there, it's grass mowing, correct?
Yeah, there's not.
So there's a possibility of filing a lien.
But this is Bobak that we just settled.
But we just resolved the tree lien.
And this wouldn't be a priority lien either, I don't think, would it? I mean, that was a priority lien and we settled for.
I see what you're saying. Because the foreclosure is going on and has not been concluded, the village's lien will be erased at the end of that foreclosure.
Right.
Yes, that's true.
So are we just gonna mow it for free?
The mowing?
I mean, I understand we have to keep the grass.
And that's the point, you know, when it gets to a code violation, we can either ignore it until the bank closes and just leave the ice sore there, or we can mow it.
It costs us $275 each time to mow it?
Yeah.
We bring in a contractor to do that. We don't put our own personnel on private property.
That's a quarter acre lot. I mean, there's a bunch of guys that'll mow it for $30.
Okay, we'll, we'll get some better bids next time.
I mean, I understand we're gonna be stuck with it, right? Nobody wants to look at it, but I'd rather be stuck with paying $30 each time than, than $275. You've got that house better looking naturally, $275.
Well, as you know, you don't call a landscaper, you don't pay a landscaper to come out, do a whole yard like this for $30. We can hire a kid down the block maybe, but that's not what we do.
No, I know that, but there's like the lawn service that my neighbor has right across the street, it's like $35 a week or something.
Have we notified the bank throughout possession of this house if they're responsible for the maintenance of code? Have we sent them a notification of code violation? I think we talked about doing that to people that violate codes, like give a certified letter or some type of notification at least.
Linda handles that, so.
No, but the bank, there's a bank that owns it now, so like when I bought my first place, it was foreclosed, Amy May owned it, and they mowed the grass because they owned it.
Above the driveway.
And that kind of stuff. So like, I mean, we, nobody owned it before, right? The Bobaks did, but they weren't doing anything, right? Because they couldn't.
They can get the information, but they may get them.
Well, the bank, the bank doesn't officially own it until after the judicial sale. I don't know what the status of the proceeding, they're not to sale yet, though, I'm sure of that. You can, you can send a notice and some banks will respond and some won't. Once they are the owner, that's different. Of course, they'll be, they'll be seeking then to sell it so that, so they can avoid the maintenance obligations.
Mike, to the point you made, we have several of these in town and they work in very different ways. We have a home up in Lakewood where they have a, they actually have a management company, a maintenance company that they contract with nationwide, this one, this large mortgage holder does. And I was able to speak to her, I was able to ask her, tell her you have until next Wednesday. There's a sticker on the door, but nobody's paying attention. So we actually, Lori's spoken with the same woman, too, that that property's been in foreclosure for a couple of years now. And it's actually half of a townhouse, so somebody's living in the other half, and the other person's a kind of a regular caller to us. This is totally different. This is a single mortgage company where they don't have a management company like that. There's nobody to contact. We can send them registered letters, which we do, and we file liens, which they then fight. So this is just a much different situation. It's already in litigation, so it's a very different situation.
I guess I have another.
No, I will not argue that we could, we can find less expensive ways to mow the lawn, or in a situation like this, we can let the lawn go until it's, until the proceedings have been handled.
No, I don't necessarily think that that's the right option either. I don't think anybody in the board would say let the grass grow, put it up to place. So how often does something like this come up where we have to contract somebody?
Not very often, once or twice a year.
There's not, the reason why I'm asking is like we don't have a guy or a company that we go to on the regular.
Who do we pay for this?
Jason and Sons, we use them.
That's who we use, yeah. And we do, you know, we get somebody that's bonded and insured because we don't want them going on somebody else's property and get injured. That's why we don't send our own people out there. So those are gonna, I don't think we'll find, we may or may not find less expensive people to do it. But we can, we can look if you don't, if this company is not somebody we should use, we'll look into finding something less expensive.
I don't know whether it is or isn't, but 275 seems a lot for a weekly grass, a biweekly grass.
Well, it's not biweekly, they're doing this every couple of months. That's why you need insurance.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with that, with the lengthy discussion, do we have any more questions? Any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable for October 7th.
Never know, do you?
In full of $197,000.
Probably a little too obvious.
$304.16. Okay, we need a second? Okay. Let's gather up.
That's a really long.
Probably the chief contractor.
Uh, with several matters, several internal department matters.
But that's, is that our HR?
Uh, this, it's our labor, labor attorney.
Okay, that's, I was just wondering, Mike, that doesn't look like Schuster's law firm.
No. We've, we've used them for our labor negotiations and primarily law enforcement related.
Okay. Here, first and second, any other questions? Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Stew.
Hi.
Which stands for I.
And now everybody's favorite part, village committee reports.
PDC.
I have nothing to report at this time. Next meeting will be next Wednesday.
Can't wait. PR.
Uh, most of our, our next meeting will be October 28th.
Is that the last Thursday or the fourth Thursday?
Oh. I had to try to make sure. Um, we've been, we've recently discussed things including, um, budgeting and, um, the importance of the newsletter, um, we've been, we've been about feedback on how they want us to respect them.
Public works.
Already reported.
Budget.
No report.
Anybody have any new business?
Just, just, uh, brought this, the clarification, PDC, economic data, take thirty here.
No new business, I have a few announcements. Um, first of all, we'd like to offer condolences to Mary Brandis' family, uh, and passing up her mother this week. So think of her and her family. I spoke to Mary this week, she's, she's doing okay, she's got a lot going on, but she's doing. Um, I want to thank Linda Day again for the decorations all around town, downtown and scarecrow contest, please vote. The winner to be announced, number three for the win, the same. Uh, we've got, um, cave event this weekend, uh, Friday, trunk or treat on Sunday. One of the things that we talk about reaching out to the residents, one of the things I'd like to schedule for November sometime would be, we used to do like the, the trustees and the village people on parade type situation, or village people and coffee or whatever we called it, where we opened up the village hall and did an event, like it's not like people come in for coffee if they chose or something like that, it's like we could, like meet the trustees, you know, we've all been at this time now six months, right? We were looking for feedback, so maybe that's a way to do it, maybe we could figure out a virtual aspect of it or whatever, however we want to do it, just think about it, I think we should do it in November, maybe pick like a Saturday morning or something like that, or Saturday afternoon even. Um, because, I don't know, I think it's important that we put ourselves out there too, I mean, we got the participation you want, you don't have to.
It's well intended.
Um, we wanted to talk about the, last year we did a holiday parade, um, and it was really well received by the community. And I'm curious if the board felt that we should do that again. We kind of have a date in mind that would work. I talked with Ann at the Rose Garden because she was such a huge part of that last year. Um, and she's willing to help us coordinate and that kind of stuff, just like she did last year, we were looking at, uh, December, November. That's a Saturday. Last year we did it on a Sunday and we thought it would be like every other parade where we did it in the morning and then moved on with our day. And as we got into the planning, we decided we should do this at night. And so we could decorate everybody's cars and everything and Santa Claus came and Santa Claus rode on top of the fire truck. And if Santa Claus is willing to do that, I'm sure the fire party would be willing to do that again. Um, trustee Kelly and his wife came up with a great route that seemed to work really well last time. It was long, but it seemed to work really well. We hadn't done that, something like that. It's not like we've done a birthday parade or anything like that this year.
Christmas parade.
It would be something that we would put on and manage like we did last year, if you guys are up for it.
It was a blast.
We had so much fun.
It was a blast.
We don't, we, last year we got a ton of food for the food pantry here in town. Uh, the food pantry in town this year does not want to take our food because they don't have people to take it. So we started conversations with, uh, two people, Ann and the D300 food pantry, it was by habit, since the D300 food pantry came out here for a, a meeting about something else. And while they were here, I said, hey, do you guys have any opposition to taking food from our community? And they're like, no. So, and so, um, Ann had indicated that she does, she, she does a coat drive in Elgin every year for the, for the homeless and stuff in our community, really stepped up last year to get donations for her. So we thought that, again, if the board was willing to do this, that we could do clothes and stuff and blankets for the homeless and then food for the D300 food pantry. We were just trying to find people that would take it because our community is extremely, extremely generous and, and we need someone to give food. And the food pantry doesn't want it.
I'm not for Hampshire, but for the, the school district. Who would take like the clothes and the blankets and?
So Ann from the Rose Garden runs Ann's Angel and she does a lot of coat drives and stuff and blankets when it starts raining and falling and stuff, and then gives it to homeless people in the area. Um, but last year they did a, um, coat drive where they set up coat racks and that kind of thing right in front of the Elgin Roost Rabbit. And homeless from all different parts of the area came to downtown Elgin and we gave out tons, like, I mean, I participated in it last year, made loan from Park District did as well. We had a bunch of people from town, but it was Hampshire goes to Elgin, is what it could have been. And it was like six or seven pickup trucks full of clothes that we gave out and blankets. And actually Dr. Tom Gesselmann's wife made a bunch of scarves and, and hats and stuff and stuff. So she was looking for a way to gain interest and that kind of stuff. And so what we did last year is the village was at the end on a trailer and then people would set their food out on the curb and wave at us and we'd stop the truck running and that kind of thing. Um, the food pantry, or the D300 food pantry actually has a van, a truck, and they would participate in that. So they would pick up the food and then we would just figure out a way to pick up the blankets and coats and that kind of stuff. So if it's something the village wants to do, entertain, we need help to do it because last year, last year it was trustee Coles, myself and trustee Kelly and our wives and families that coordinated a whole lot of it. And it was, luckily we did it once, so we could do it again, but we need all the help we can get.
When is the downtown missile pole market or whatever?
November 6th.
November 6th?
Yeah. And also, I was going to ask if you guys, if we can, we both have the parade or one block of downtown, we just have Christmas carolers, some people come, have that job with people, that works.
Like ended there?
Mm-hmm. Ended there, then yeah, for more.
He was going to serve that.
Yeah.
Some Christmas, some Christmas cheer.
Yeah.
So, uh, are we doing the Christmas booth with Santa and all that ethic? Do we need help?
Very familiar, yes.
Okay. So, so, okay, another event to mark your calendars for November 6th, the Chamber of Commerce is doing their missile pole market downtown. I think that's.
Holiday.
Holiday on state, I'm sorry, they changed me.
Holiday.
And Santa Claus normally comes and last year was nice, they decorated everything and Santa and the elves, which were all of us, just showed up to kind of manage the flow. Um, and it was 70 degrees, which was really nice.
It's beautiful.
Yes, my afternoon elf was very happy.
The afternoon elf is not working.
Yeah, the, the afternoon elf.
Was taking a vacation.
Was very jolly. It was very jolly. They've been, what, where they making across the street? There was some kind of.
I don't remember that.
So, so we're going to need volunteers for that if you guys are available. If they, they do it, if they're going to do it the same way they did it last year, the courtyard at the Gabber Building is where they set everything up and then they funnelled everybody through the Gabber Building and lined up and then we just, you know, said, okay, well, we're here to hold cameras and then direct people towards Santa and that kind of stuff. So it was really just kind of managing the flow. Last year we had scheduled, it was like two people each shift and I don't know what the hours are, but just kind of mark your calendars if you can. It, it is kind of neat and it's another way to, to your point, trustee Coles getting out there. The more of us that are involved in these kind of events, the more people see us and ask questions or approach me or whatever, some of that.
They wanted to go through the food pantry.
Right, yes. I miss me, but you landed in the basket. So, yeah. Um, but as far as that goes, um, one last thing, actually two last things. Um, there's going to be another email that we're, that we're going to be sending you about climate action plan. Metro West has endorsed the regional climate action plan that the, how the caucus of mayors has presented. Um, we sent an email to the board on July 20th about this, so you can scour your emails from the past, or we're going to send another one out. Metro West and the mayor's caucus is wanting the villages to sign on to this long-term plan, uh, like, you know, cutting emissions and that kind of stuff. I'm not going to get into the details of it, but the email's sent on September, on July 20th with the actual plan and then there's going to be another follow-up. Nothing that requires immediate action, I just kind of want to get the feel for the board if that's something that they know, the path they want to go down. Um, I did have a conversation with District 300 today about, um, the new schools and the boundaries, because that's been a lot of things we've been hearing in the communities. There's a new school going up, is my kid going to move and that kind of thing. Um, they are going to present, the district staff is going to present the options for the borders. Uh, there's four different plans on October 12th to the Board of Education. After the, after that presentation, they hope to get the feedback from their board as to which directions they should go down, which plans they should present to the public. And if they do, if and when they get the feedback they want, at that second meeting, which would be the 26th of October, they're going to do, they're going to take the road show out to the community. Um, and there's going to be community meetings at the school districts, buildings, um, with the families that would be affected by this. Right now there are four plans that I've, that I was told about. One option is basically all of Lakewood and all, most of Pingry going to the new school. Uh, another option is, uh, like the school kind of being split and leaving some of the Gary Wright kids back Gary Wright. There's another option on the table that, that draws borders for the buildings in this area as if there were no borders drawn at all at the current time. And then there's another option that even comes into town here and takes some of the kids to the Hampshire Elementary School and brings them to Gary Wright. So there's a lot of different plans, there's a lot of moving pieces, but that's some of the things that we've been hearing as far as, okay, there's new schools, my big enemy. That's their process, they hope to have their process worked out and then be voted on finally in the first weekend, the first meeting of theirs in January. So it's just kind of where we're at. Um, I spoke to some of you about the meeting that Mr. Hedges and I attended at the superintendent's office. That seems a long time ago now, but this is the first time we've met since then. The village of Pingry Grove and Gilberts, um, in Hampshire got called into the superintendent's office about the way some of our residents have been, let me take it back, some of the community members at large have been treating the staff members of the school. Whether it be swearing at the, at the teachers as they are bringing their kids in, berating administration, sending threatening emails, texts and that kind of stuff. Um, our contention was, they, they wanted us all to be together to kind of come up with some kind of plan. And our immediate reaction, by ours, I mean Gilberts and Hampshire and Pingry was, why are you guys putting up with this? At the village level, somebody calls and yells and screams, is there anyone of our employees? We have process for that, right? We don't allow somebody to sit on the other end of the phone, get berated. You know, Jay can speak more intimately than, than I can about our internal policies, but basically we push back on them. And so I had made a statement from my village president's Facebook page about get along with each other, this isn't the type of thing that we should be doing to each other. The village of Gilberts said the same, it's been very well received. District 300 wants us to sign a community letter for which we haven't seen any of the language. Um, but we kind of made a pact among Pingry Grove, Gilberts and Hampshire that if somebody, their village doesn't want to sign, then we're not going to. We're not going to sign on with Gilberts and Pingry. So if and when they do move forward with the community letter, um, I will ring it to you guys and maybe we will discuss if the board can think that the village of Hampshire should sign the letter, not just the mayor. Uh, we'll say that based on our pushing back on the school district about how you guys are letting. Their school board president, the last meeting is on YouTube, Dr. Serpino, who also serves on our pension board here, our police pension board, um, gave a very impassioned speech and changed the policy for the school district that they, staff is no longer to put up with that type of behavior, equipment, and they established a clear cut policy of this is our staff, you're not going to treat people like this and we're not going to take them. So they took our words to heart and so I just felt that you guys all needed to know what was going on. I can ask, I'll entertain any questions that you guys have about that situation, but we didn't know why we were getting called to the school district 300's admin office until we got there.
You shouldn't have went. You should have told us, you want to talk to us, come here. I wouldn't have went.
Actually, we thought it was going to be a nice community meeting.
Yeah. And we, they framed it was as like, we, we were inviting the, the villages of Gilberts, Pingry Grove and Hampshire, um, to, uh, talk about how we can work others, community to support each other. So it's like, oh, yeah. And we walked into a, a meeting with all of the principals of all of the schools in the area, all of their administration, there was so much money in that room. But I told them, I, I said, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't really prepared for this and I felt like I was being called into the principal's office, you know? And so, um, the educators that were there gave impassioned speeches about some of the trials and tribulations that they've undergone and, and I talked to, you know, some teachers and stuff and, you know, we're used to it. People calling, yelling, swearing at us all the time, we signed up for it. A lot of these teachers were shielded. Education has typically been shielded for that. The principal, one of the principals gave a, a statement that they're used to being the heroes, not the villains. This is the first time since a lot of these people have been teachers or educators, no matter how long they've been in the field, that they're in the spotlight now and people are being managed. And I mean, and your teacher, you can speak for that, I'm sure.
Well, I think I mentioned that many of the communities are primarily elementary schools, because they're used to being the teacher of high schools, because they're used to being the building. So it's not unusual for us, but the level of vigilance that is being directed at schools down, some have the direction, is expected, um, within the last, I would say, three and in place of working on. So that is, because we are not allowed to, to do this. Maybe it's not as long. I don't know that, but it's, but it's generally not something that you're, we're supposed to make it happen. So.
And that's how your district handles it?
No.
How many other districts handle it?
Well, that's how, in general, prior to, to, that's all we've been addressing. So, we're going to, to remain calm.
So I've had the opportunity to speak to some of you about that, um, but not everyone and so I wanted to bring it up so that you know, it's the most upcoming from District 300, but we're very clear in the fact that if all three of our communities don't sign this letter, if one community doesn't sign it, all three communities. So, and it's because if I sign my name on it, I'm not going to be allowed to speak to you.
And that is, because we are not allowed to, to, to. Maybe it's not as long, I don't think that, that is generally not something that you're, like, the whole thing is.
And that's how your district handled it? How many other districts handle it?
Well, that's how, in general, prior to, that's always been addressed, so, results to remain calm.
So I've had the opportunity to speak to some of you about that, but not everyone, and so I wanted to bring it up so that we can, most upcoming from District 300, but we're very clear in the fact that if all three of our communities don't sign this letter, if one community doesn't sign it, all three communities. So, and it's because if I sign my name on the, on the line, I'm speaking to the board, and I don't want to be there. That's all I have. So I will, we are going to go into executive session under Section 21. I would like to close the, entertain a motion to close this meeting and go into the executive, but we will take the.
Go.
Questions, comments, vote, vote, please.
Tim, we're going to be closing for the meeting now. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.